Okay. It takes a while, I'm... It's more. Oh, where are you headed? It's just been hot for so long, you know?
Press it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being July 26, 2016. The meeting today is being recorded by the P D School Committee's recording secretary, Marge Markarelli. The matters listed on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start the meeting if everybody could please rise for a moment of silence, and I'm gonna follow that up with a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes? We have minutes from June 28, 2016, the regular school committee meeting from that evening.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 28.
We have a motion made, any seconds?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico, any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Coppenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Coppenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3120, dated July 26, 2016, in the amount of $1,4,531.27, subject to audit.
Second.
The motion by Mrs. Coppenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman, for approval of warrant A, number 3120. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Coppenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Amico? Mr. Olympio, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
A million dollars spent just like that. Mrs. Coppenter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3121, dated July 26, 2016, in the amount of $85,556.73, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Coppenter, and seconded by Mr. Hockman for approval of warrant B, number 3121. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Coppenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Now we'll go to continued business. We have one item on the agenda. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report on the MSBA Higgins project?
Always something new, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The Higgins School Building Committee held their monthly meeting last Thursday at 4:00 PM at the Kylie School. On the agenda were an update from the architect and our owner's project manager. We also have, at every meeting, a very thorough slideshow, which this time was really very interesting because it shows the contrast between the brand-new school and with the work which has now shifted to the demolition of the original Higgins. The first part of the building that was taken down was the chimney and the boiler room. That needed to come down to really separate the two parcels and to allow the construction of the new approach to the new building. The chimney was demolished by hand. All of the bricks were taken down and thrown into the chimney, and the reason for that was because at its closest point, the chimney was a foot and a half from the $92 million building, so we didn't take any chances. The building was, the boiler room was then taken down, the boilers were removed. There was a 20,000-gallon tank that everyone was surprised to find, that has been removed. Those are all being recycled, and right now, what you would know commonly as the vocational wing of Higgins, that whole area, has been completely gutted. All the windows have been removed, all the furniture, the interior walls have been taken out. All of the abatement of any type of hazardous materials such as asbestos or any of the chemically-connected components of a building have been taken out. And this week, that part of the building will be taken down. The approach to the Higgins from both King Street and from the Allen's Lane, the traditional pathway, have been closed off because that site is now a construction site. So, in order to see the old building come down, you have to look through a fence, but it's still pretty interesting. And I went over today, and the gymnasium has now been, they've started working on the gymnasium. The glass windows are the first thing to come out. What they're doing right now is they are, there has been some blasting, we're done with the blasting, knock on wood. New ledge had been discovered when the new driveway was being put in, so that had to be blasted away. The piles of dirt that everyone can see from, you know, from the street, those piles are being used to cover water lines and sewer lines to make sure that they're well below the frost line. They have been, they were properly laid out, but now the ground has to be built up to cover those. The building itself is all completed, the new building, and the furnishings have all been placed in there. I have statistics, if you could hang on a second, I'll find them, percentages. Let's see. I wanna say it's ninety... Ninety-three percent of all the furnishings are in there. Ninety-two percent, sorry, ninety-two percent. Signage is going up in the building, the parking lots out front are being put in, but they had an original primary layer, and now it'll be completed. And, just so everyone knows, at our last event, which was the tour of the old, say goodbye to Higgins, and there was a neighborhood meeting, people had great concerns about the traffic pattern that was being proposed for the school. It wouldn't have been the permanent traffic pattern anyway, it's because we are still going to have work being done at that site when school opens, and we need to be able to control the traffic so that the work on the demolition and then the installation of new fields can take place without people driving around the original road. That traffic pattern that was proposed has been changed, after taking into consideration a lot of the concerns that were brought up at the neighborhood meeting and from people who called in. That traffic pattern is going to be put out to the parents, it will be given to those folks when they attend the rollout of the Chromebooks. It will be placed on the website, and it will be enforced by the police department, so we're working with the traffic department to make sure that everything is in line. Couple of the issues that have come up recently, because we have increased truck traffic again, but it's at a new phase, this is actually considered phase two. Some of the neighbors were concerned trucks were using a route that we have not given permission for. So, the general contractor has been working very diligently to make sure that anyone coming on site knows how they're supposed to drive up to the Higgins site. People who come are given a written description of how to come and go from the site, and they also have put in some enforcement when necessary on Perkins Street. And it seems, this week's things seem much better, back under control again. And part of it was just a change in the whole way that the site was being worked on. So, we will have our next Higgins School Building Committee meeting at the Higgins Library. We did not do it this month as planned because we were in the process of inspection for the occupancy permit, and that was completed on Friday. So, our next meeting will be at the Higgins Library. It will be the third Thursday of the month, it will be at 4:00 PM, and should be a very interesting meeting, and a lot more information to come through because at that point, we'll be opening in about ninety-six hours after that meeting, I think. So, things have moved very well, we're very lucky, we've had some great contractors working on that site. They've done a fabulous job of taking care of any issues that have come up. Our contact on that site is Rob St. Laurent, and I really can't say enough about Rob, he's been wonderful. And a lot of outreach to the neighbors, I know the city has also done a lot of outreach to the surrounding neighborhood. to the surrounding neighborhood, and hopefully, everybody is pleased with what's been going on, and they will also see some new vegetation going in, and the landscaping is going to go forward right before school opens, and then a little bit after school opens. So, the site's going to look absolutely beautiful by the time school opens.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I add to that regarding the Higgins Project? We have had a serious and significant problem in getting phone lines ported over to the new Higgins, and it's actually been weeks on weeks that folks have been trying to work on this, and to no avail, for a whole variety of reasons, none of which make any sense to me. I made a phone call today to former Mayor Stan Jusovich, who is the community director of relations for Verizon, and I asked him if he could do something to help us out. He did, and we do expect those lines to be ported on Thursday. One of the problems that occurs is that people now who want to register their kids or get information about the upcoming opening of school, the orientation for the Chromebooks, can't get through. We just can't, we can't, we have one temporary line, and it's getting closer and closer to the opening of school, and it will become more and more of a problem every day. So, I'd like to publicly thank former Mayor Stan Jusovich, and whatever it is that Verizon and Comcast are going to do for us over the next couple of days to get this project completed, we will be very thankful.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, and again, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that very detailed report, that was great. Okay, we'll go on to public participation. Anybody in the audience that would like to come up to the microphone and speak? It is open to them? Okay, seeing no one, we will go now to superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The school committee did vote in executive session to approve the contract of the special ed. director, Ruth Grooby, and she is here this evening with her husband, who also works for the school department. I would like to congratulate her, and introduce her, and ask her if she'd like to say a word or two. You're never at a loss for words, Ruthie.
I just want to thank you all very much. I will work diligently for the kids, and I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, Ruthie.
Do we need a vote? Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract executed between the PBD Public School System and Ruth Grooby for the position of Director of Special Education. So move.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
That was probably done backwards too, Brandy, wasn't it? Which I know that you'll call me about tomorrow. Continuing on, today we had the pleasure of going to the Google headquarters in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Assistant Superintendent Murtagh, myself, and Jared Haas are tech, technology wizard, one of our technology wizards. And, there were just a couple of things I'd like to ask for, Mr. Mayor. They do have three masseuses on site. I'll settle for one. Within 200 feet of every employee is a mini-kitchen, fully stocked with free breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We would settle for lunch and dinner. Breakfast, I can eat at home. Are you taking notes?
I was just getting ready to ask someone to make that motion.
Yeah.
I know, and I'm voting.
We just had a wonderful tour of an extraordinary company. They are, by their own admission, very wealthy. They treat their employees very well. The physical plant is incredible, has a full gym, a bandroom, where people can just go in and play music, play their own instruments, and a whole bunch of other things that were wonderful. But, what was really exciting about seeing Google in action is that everybody's working either in teams, or in groups, or walking the halls and discussing issues. And, we are going to be very lucky to have the director of this region's Google office greet our teachers on August 25th, to talk about the future of what technology holds for our kids, and what it is that our teachers should be thinking about for getting kids ready for jobs that aren't even created yet. It was an eye-opening sight to watch the productivity, and how that productivity takes place in the modern world of business. So, we were thrilled to be invited, we were thrilled to take the walkthrough. We did get stuck in the garage, as the machine refused to spit out tickets, and there were cars in front of us and behind us, but we eventually, as you can see, got out. We had a wonderful day, and I just wanted you to know that if you can make it on the 25th, when the teachers come back, I think you'll really enjoy this gentleman who's going to address our faculty. At no cost to the district, by the way. Also, the McCarthy School is going along very well. I receive reports every Friday from Principal Smoyer, and the company, the construction company that is working on the job, and the OPM are wonderful to work with, we're on schedule, and things are moving along very, very well.
I just want to add to that, that Tim Healy feels the same way, he's very pleased with how that project is progressing.
In your packet, you have a contract that we have moved ahead with, with the United States Army. It should be a very, very fun night to have the Army there as our partners. They will be making a $500 donation to the school department, that will go directly to the athletics, athletic department. The issue of sporting event ticket prices that you have in your packet, I would recommend either putting off to the next meeting, or moving it into Mr. Rozignol's Subcommittee. He is not here this evening, and has requested that he be here for full discussion.
Mrs. Dunn?
I'm going to make a motion that we put this into Mr. Rozignol's Subcommittee for his work on that. So move.
Second. You heard Mrs. Dunn's motion to move this item into Mr. Rozignol's Committee, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor? So vote.
And, just for the new members, that's what happens when someone misses a meeting.
You have in your packet a summary of the Department of Education's CPR reports, comprehensive program reviews. We have kept you abreast of this all year, we have gone through a number of coordinated program reviews, we have done very, very well in all of the areas. We still have a ways to go to meet full compliance, but we are, the majority of what we needed to do has been accomplished, and we will certainly, I believe we have a year to complete the rest of this, these recommendations. There is one thing that's not in your packet. In the vocational comprehensive program review, there is another part to that review, which is the physical plant and safety issues. Although we've completed nearly all of the recommendations, it's not in writing, and we will get that to you for the next meeting. Any questions on that?
Mr. Olympio?
Through the Chair, Dr. Levine. I was reviewing the summary of the civil rights in that report, and specifically, there was CR-7B, and I'll read it out loud, it's not too long. It says, "PBD Public Schools have been cited for not requiring all grades at the high school level to participate in physical education. A task force at PBD High School will be developed to create a senior physical education and health activity fair to fulfill this requirement." Currently, aren't the seniors required to participate in gym, and if not, what do they actually mean by a fair?
Do you want to answer that? Do you want me to answer that? We have not typically required all kids at all times to take physical education. It has actually been a bone of contention with Mr. Sheridan, who thinks that all kids should be taking at least some physical education each year. A lot of our seniors are not required to do so. State law says that we must not only offer, but require kids to take it all four years in some form, but they don't determine what format that is. So, for example, the typical physical education gymnasium program that you would think of, that we all went through, is not necessarily what it is that these kids have to participate in, they're our alternatives. One of the alternatives that Mr. Sheridan and his group are thinking about is a series of events that kids could participate in to prove their physical fitness. It wouldn't necessarily be taking physical education for a series of weeks, but it would be participating in a series of events over a period of days that would show their physical fitness, and that's what the fear is. It's not designed yet, but that's what we're working on, and working toward. And, we do have to submit this back to the state to see whether or not they'll approve it.
And on that, so, after they conduct their review, do we have a chance, I mean, do they just issue the report, or is there any back and forth at all?
There is so much back and forth that sometimes we, we've had enough of the back and forth. Most of the people that we deal with from the state are extraordinarily well-meaning, and they're actually quite competent at what they do. The recommendations are good recommendations. It does force us far free to take an introspective look at many different things that we do, and make sure that we're doing it right. So, it has a lot of, this thing has a lot of value, but it's also extremely intrusive. It takes a great deal of time, effort, and energy on the part of a lot of people, mostly Ms. Murtagh, who has been working on this unbelievably for quite some time, and a lot of our people who are responsible for each area, Mr. Sheridan, for example, Mrs. Ferry, for example, so many people work so hard on this. We have an opportunity, they send out teams, we have an opportunity to talk to them for long periods of time about not only their concerns, but also their accommodations, the things that they point out that we're doing well. Then, they issue a report that we can respond to, and then we have the opportunity to send in to them a full summary for each point of what we think we are doing, as opposed to what they may have suggested that they think we're doing. We will agree on many points. Some points we will agree to disagree, and some points, quite frankly, we're not, we're not doing right. So, we have multiple conversations, we have wonderful people at the state that we talk to on a regular basis, and that's a long way of saying yes. We have a lot of opportunity to offer input.
And then, one last question. With regards to the special education, I was just looking at the summary of findings, would you say that the summary of findings has decreased over the last few years? Do you have a reference, I mean, is that a way of gauging how much we're making in progress?
Kara tells me that it has decreased.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to bring up something, following up on Mr. Olympio's question on the seniors at the high school. I will be honest with you, I know it has been a bone of contention for a long time about the physical education requirement. My understanding was, when we reintroduced the requirement a few years ago, that it was going to be done on a rolling basis, and that the, at that time, juniors and seniors, when it was first implemented, and I apologize, I can't remember what year it was, but juniors and seniors would not have to put physical education into their schedule, because they were already planning when they formulated their schedule for specific academic courses. But, we made it mandatory for freshmen and sophomores. The following year, it would have been the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and either this past year, or the coming year, would be the year that it would be mandatory for seniors. So, I was surprised to see this, and Mr. Olympio brought up a really good point. My understanding, and if we go back and look at our minutes, is that this year, all four grades at the high school would be taking a physical education class. Now, I know they were looking into different things, as opposed to traditional phys-ed. There were going to be all kinds of different offerings to try to, try to make it, make it something that the kids wanted to do. But, now to hear that this year, the seniors are not taking a mandatory PE class, and they're going to spend another year looking into it, I am very surprised. That is not what I thought was happening at all.
Neither Kara nor I know the answer to that. I wouldn't know the sequence, and I will find out for you, whether or not, I'm nearly positive that seniors were not required to take physical education this year, but I can't say that for sure. I will find out from Mr. Sheridan. It also may be that although you have it in your minutes, and that you had all good intentions, the way that you did the rolling, the state may not have accepted that, and may have noted it in any way.
If that's the case, then there shouldn't be an issue, because then they should be taking it this year.
Exactly.
All set, Mrs. Dunn? Thank you. Mr. Amico?
Through the Chair, I'm actually all set, thank you.
All set? Go back to you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you very much. The hiring status report is quite lengthy, and I will answer any questions that you might have, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. You have an updated version that we were able to put together for you this morning. Thank you, Dr. Sharet, and Barbara, out of the Human Resource Office. This is pretty much up to date. I did want to go back to the budgeting process, and I promised you that we would do the best that we could to save as much money in the high-out, low-in area, and we have done a tremendous job on that. Right now, we're saving $30,000 to $35,000 a hire, and you know that we need that money to offset the deficit that we're in right now. So, the principals have done a great job. There have been some anomalies in specialty areas where we've had to hire a little bit higher on the salary scale, but for the most part, we've been hiring bachelors one, masters one, and we're doing a terrific job in that area, and getting people that principals are very excited about. I did want to bring to your attention that Lisa Levine is my daughter-in-law, she has been hired for the 20-hour CODA position. She has worked for us before. By law, I need to inform you that she is a family member. I did inform you of that the last time she was here, when she worked our summer programs. I don't know if I had to do it again, but I'm doing it anyway. So, I'm doing this in public session. Lisa is my son Joel's wife. She is highly qualified, and cute, too. The rest of the presentation speaks for itself. There are still some openings. There is still one position that I may have to add. We are worried about three areas in the school system right now. The South School K, and then there are two other areas of concern.
The Welch?
The Welch Grade Three? The Welch Grade Three, and Welch Kindergarten. Now, they're not high enough yet for me to add another class, but we are watching those numbers. Other than those, the class sizes throughout the district now are stable, and very, very good for classes. Mr. Amico, through the Chair?
Through the Chair, Dr. Levine. With the, with the cut in funding for kindergarten, and now the reinstatement of funds, did that impact us in any way? Is any of those monies coming back towards kindergarten for us? Were they earmarked for kindergarten? Because I read a couple of articles, but I couldn't get any documentation on if some of that monies was coming back to kindergarten.
None of, thank you, Mr. Amico, none of that money came back in the kindergarten area. All of the money that came back has no impact on us right now. The kindergarten grant, which is a $20 million grant statewide, impacted us with a loss of $200,000. It meant, it would have meant, had I chosen to do so, that we would have had to lay off every paraprofessional in every kindergarten. That makes no sense to me, and I know that would not be the wish of this school committee. But, we are just going to have to struggle to find the money somewhere else, but there will be no layoffs unless you direct me to do so of those paraprofessional aides. Those people are critical to, especially at the youngest ages, to accepting students, particularly those who don't come with the same advantages of the students, who may not have been exposed to reading, who may not have books in their homes, who may carry with them second with them second language learner issues, and as you have heard from principals, who may be coming from homes with opioid addicted parents. We need a second pair of eyes so that teachers can laser beam in on kids who need extra help in that classroom. And the only way that we can do that is to have paraprofessionals available. So I have not made a recommendation to you to cut those people and I do not intend to do so. One last point. I will, I have completed a letter to the Governor that I intend to send next week when Ms. McCarelli puts that on lead ahead. I believe that it's a professional letter that bemoans the loss of this money and speaks to the Governor's value system, which is early childhood education. I know that he supports it. I know that he is passionate about it and maybe he doesn't realize that by allowing the kindergarten grant to go unfunded, how much of an impact it has on school systems and kindergarten classes at the earliest ages. So I'll be sending you a copy of that next week, but that is complete and ready to go. I'll be copying that also to the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, the Mayor and local media if they choose to print it.
Mr. Amico?
Through the Chair, Dr. Levine. So what we had last year, we will, it'll be status quo. We will have a full day. Everything will be the same, basically, kindergarten program.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just, I'm thrilled to hear about your letter to the Governor. I really wanted to let my colleagues know, there is still a chance to have that money put back into the budget. This weekend, the legislature is going to work again on reexamining the budget. They put back $100 million into the budget this past Saturday and they are going to meet again. And I would like to make a motion that the school committee submit a letter to our delegation reiterating what Dr. Levine has spoken about, the impact on this school system and the impact on education across the state for the children coming into school at the kindergarten level. So moved.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call, vote, oh, on the motion, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I was going to suggest the same thing. And I think when we, first I'd gotten the kindergarten grant, it was much higher than the 200,000. We had started way, way high, 400,000, and it just keeps getting cut, cut, cut and cut. So now it's just finally gone, which is just despicable. So I couldn't be in any more favor of this. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Mr. Amico, on the motion?
Committee, I'd like to take a step further and talk to our legislators about making kindergarten funding a law in general, just like 1 through 12 is the benefits, not only to the children, but to the teachers and the teachers to, to grades two and three down the road. And obviously with working parents, with both parents working, you know, it's very difficult for them to, to not work full-time if kids aren't going to school full-time at that age, but there are just so many benefits to it. I'd, I'd love to be able to speak to legislation or have something sent out in favor of a law to have full funding for kindergarten down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn? We stay with that motion and then, so we have a motion on the floor, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote on the motion?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
You good? Okay.
I was just asking if he had wanted me to amend my motion or not. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a deeper issue than the, the kindergarten grant. And honestly, just when we do that, and I think we should do it at the next meeting, right now, Dr. Levine, you'd know the percentage. Is it, how many, what percentage of school districts provide full, free full-day kindergarten for their students?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's now significant.
It, it is.
It is now significant, yeah.
And I think one of the things that was so important in PBD was when we did it, it was very, very new. There were very few people, very few communities that provided free all-day kindergarten. And PBD did it, PBD did a great job at it and we have data that shows how beneficial that was. It's, it's in some vault up at, up at your office, Dr. Levine. And it was very interesting because it showed an increase in reading scores. It, it was tracked for, for a while. I don't think it's tracked anymore. It was, but it was powerful. It proved that people knew what they were talking about. And of course, that's been borne out now across the United States where everyone understands that early childhood education is so important. I think when we do that letter, one of the things that we can put into that is that historical information about how important kindergarten is, not just to our city, but across the board. But we have the proof of the benefit of that. And hearing all the sermons from on high, from the state about early childhood, early childhood, early childhood, and then with the other side of their mouth, having them cut the money, is absolutely infuriating. They continually pound us to get the data, get the data. We get the data, you prove it, and they still cut the money. And I know it's, it's a different issue than trying to get that kindergarten grant money back in, but as far as fully funding early childhood ed, the state should do it and they need to put their money where their mouth is because they don't. We've been dealing with this on so many issues for so many years. This is a really big one and it's really, really frustrating to see what devolved over the past few weeks with the state budget and early childhood ed. So this is my sermon for the day.
Mr. Amico?
Through the Chair, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you. That's exactly what I meant, but I wasn't saying. Thank you.
Good issue. Okay, Dr. Levine, back to you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring the committee up to date. We now have 90 school choice in. This year, I have accepted 29. That's inclusive in the 90. That's an increase of $160,000 for a total of $495,000 coming into the district for school choice. We only have 51 kids who have chosen to go out on school choice at $280,000. Therefore, there's a clear benefit to the city of $215,000 right now. And we're still working on school choice, but most of the school choice people have been placed. So I wanted to give you an update on that. We have a couple of awards, both to the Brown School for their environmental work. I would just ask for acceptance of the $400 reward and the $100 reward.
Motion to accept the $400, is it a donation or an award? Whatever it is.
It's an award, actually.
An award from the Massachusetts Environmental Trust and if we can send a letter back to them with gratitude.
Happy to do so.
Motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. On the, all in favor, it's a vote. You have one other item, too? One other donation?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the $100 reward from, also from the Massachusetts Environmental Trust and send a letter of, with gratitude and send a letter of thanks.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. All in favor of acceptance? Thank you.
See the environmental people put their money where their mouth is.
And you have a copy in your packet of the agreement between myself, representing the PBD Public Schools, and the $17,000 donation coming from District Attorney Jonathan Blodgett's office. The construction, a reconstruction of the substance abuse counselor's office is underway and we're working with the new substance abuse counselor for, to decorate to her liking along with furniture, et cetera. So we're very, very pleased and again, I would like to give a, a great big public thank you to DA Jonathan Blodgett for his partnership with us in such a worthy and, and significant effort. I think that's it. There's, there is one thing I need to comment on in the written communication, but other than that, I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. We do have two written communications. First one is the North Shore Education Consortium amended agreement and the second one is an opinion from our Assistant City Solicitor, Donald Conn regarding voting rights. Turnover to you, Dr. Levine. You said you had a comment on one of the items?
It's just the, the amended agreement just restates our, the consortium's vote to have a difference in, in fees between members and non-members. We have kept the fees reasonable moving forward to next year and I simply wanted to inform you and ask you to vote in the positive for that amendment.
On these communications, any further questions, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. Did you want to vote tonight on the North Shore Consortium amendment or did we already vote on that?
I, I think you've already, you voted on the original contract, this, this amendment. I'm not sure if it's the same thing. I think it's different. It's, came afterwards.
Okay. I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the amendment to the contract with the North Shore Consortium, North Shore Education Consortium. So moved.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of the amended agreement with the North Shore Education Consortium, it was seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Any further comments? Go to Subcommittee Reports. Education, anything, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to report that we have a tentative agreement with the AFSMI Supervisors, which is the Transportation Maintenance and Food Service. We'll be bringing that forward for ratification shortly.
Great, thank you. School Safety? Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Athletics and Wellness, we will hold as well as Building and Grounds. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
Sorry, nothing to report this evening.
And the Liaison, the City Council and Advisory Boards, I know you had a meeting earlier. Did you want to give a report now or, or hold that till the next meeting?
No, that's okay, Mr. Mayor. I'll give it tonight. This evening at 6:30, the members of the Subcommittee on Liaison with the City Council met with our counterparts from the council. Mr. Amico and Mr. Olympio and I met with Ms. Manning and Mr. Gravel from the City Council. Also present were Mr. Hockman and Mrs. Carpenter. And because the issue we were all going to be discussing was concerning elections in the school, we had City Clerk Tim Spanos and Audrey Gordon, one of the registrars of voters. It was a very good meeting, in my opinion, and I think others shared that as well, because we discussed safety in the schools. We also discussed other options about the, the voting process and there were a lot of different ideas being brought forward to the City Clerk concerning the early voting, the, the option of super precincts where you would have three precincts or one complete ward vote in a, in a location. And he, he really enlightened a lot of us about, you know, the state regulations governing the local elections and how things have to operate according to very specific rules and, and regulations. We also talked about the potential of voting at Higgins and we explained to the counselors as well as to Mr. Spanos, the concerns of our facility manager about utilizing the gymnasium for voting as opposed to the audit, I'm sorry, as opposed to the cafeteria and that we, we know, we have a year to work on that and we will definitely be working on that. One of the things to come out of that meeting was that we will meet again in about three months, just to keep the channels of communication open and keep the City Council informed about the progress in our schools, if we have any issues, if we have good news or bad news, we want to share it with them. And the Subcommittee is going to be preparing a letter with input from the full school committee. We would like to ask for increased police presence at the schools when school is in session on an election day. For example, this September during the primary, school will be in session. School will not be in session during the final election in November, but in September. So we asked if we could have increased police presence to help with security in the building and also with traffic control or any issues that occur outside of the area being used for voting. Our understanding is that the police who are on duty during election day, that their primary focus is actually ensuring the, the legitimacy of the election. So they're guarding the ballot box, they're guarding the voting process. We're running a school system around it and there are issues that happen out in the parking lot, in the lobby, wherever, and you can't always have the police come away because they may be doing something dealing with the actual election. So Tim actually told us if we can give him details of where we need people, at what times, that he would be amenable to looking at that and working with us on it, because we know not every building has the same issues at the same time of day. So it was a very productive meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. That's wonderful. New business, none at this time. Items for the next agenda can be handled in regular course. Thank you for a good meeting, everyone. I hope, continue to have a great summer.
We make a motion to adjourn?
Second that. All in favor?